... I don't know where to get that. I can't get it. I think you're just... Yeah, I can probably see. Yeah, I can probably see. Uh, yeah. What's the... Oh, okay. Yeah, that's what we do. Yeah, we do it all back Monday. Yeah, they work. 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 They're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. That's the part of the way now. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Oh, I like it. I guess we have a little... Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. Yeah, they're gonna worry much with doing all the problems. How are you? Yeah, I'm good. 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 Yeah, we have this here in a while. Yeah, we have this here in a while. Not as cold as it's probably. Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah. We were snowing. Yeah, we're snowing. Yeah, we're snowing. Yeah, we're snowing. Yeah, we're snowing. Yeah, I was gone for a couple of months. Yeah, I was gone for a couple of months. No, it's not. Yeah, 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 I'm actually thinking that one out there. 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 Keep Miss Iris' counsel. Yeah, I'm actually... It's 20 minutes. There's two minutes. And as I actually... Our board is approaching the 20 minutes. And please speak clearly into the microphone.
The people at home listening to livestream can hear it. Oh, and go green. And probably at home they missed everything I just said. So, 2 minutes. And our board clerk will let you know when you're approaching. Right, anyone signed up for public comment? This is Saffron.
Good evening. Kingston Action for Education is very concerned about the education reform proposal presented by Governor Cuomo. His proposal has made it abundantly clear that he supports an increased emphasis on high-stakes testing and that he supports a reduction in local control of our schools. He does not support a fair and appropriate education for our students, but is instead holding school aid hostage to force the legislature to implement his education proposals. The impact of the proposed increased emphasis on state testing will undoubtedly intensify the teaching to the test atmosphere in the classroom. CAFE opposes standardized high-stakes testing that is currently pushed by the federal and state governments because this testing is not being used to further instruction for children, to help children, or to support the educational needs of children. CAFE encourages all parents throughout New York State to refuse grade 3-3 assessments and it's our fundamental right to direct the upbringing and education of our children. We also request that the Kingston School Board partner with the Kingston parents by proposing ways that we can advocate with Governor Cuomo and the legislator to abandon a set of harmful educational proposals. We're thrilled by the partnership forged with the fair funding for our schools petitioned on the Kingston City School District's website, and we ask for additional partnering so that we can exchange information and concerns and come together as a district advocating for our children. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay, then I would like to turn the mic over to Dr. Pedalino with superintendent's report.
First thing on our superintendent's report today, we have a presentation from Olster Bosse's. An e-board demo, which is an electronic board packet, which we've been talking about for a while and kind of experimenting with a few different things. So, we've asked Bosse to make a presentation. And we have Kathy Goodyear here to kind of guide... You're kind of our facilitator because we're gonna go to a go-to meeting online here in any second. So, I'll hand it over to Kathy Goodyear. Thank you.
I'm gonna take the dial in.
Yeah.
Please enter your access code. Please enter your access code. When you go on your control, please hold on. Lenita? Hi, Lenita, it's Kathy Goodyear and the board of the Kingston City School District along with the public session.
Oh, Kathy, how are you?
Good, good, how are you? Can you hear us okay?
Can you hear me?
Can everybody hear her? Do we wanna like mic it up a little?
Can you make that a little louder? Is there a volume?
Let me roll one minute.
Lenita, I'm gonna mute... I'm gonna mute myself. Okay, that's not bad, thank you. Okay. And Kathy, are you able to see my screen?
Yes, we are.
Okay, personal.
My mic there. It'll be over.
You can input. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, do you wanna go ahead and start it?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, my name is Lenita Jackson. I'm with E-Board for recent. And what you're looking at is an actual sample E-Board size. I've actually logged in as an administrator and... (phone ringing)
Hold on, Lenita, we're having a very technical over here. That was a good try. All right. Go ahead.
Okay, is everything okay?
(laughter)
All right, I'm just trying to share a place that's good. (phone ringing)
Don't go away, Eric, stay here.
Hey, will we try it yet?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to turn this up a little.
The irony of it is grand obviously, it's just on Monday, you know? I think, uh, how to go look to start like the stuff, of course, behind. Okay, I'm dedicated today on the meeting module. I'm in E-Board, I've actually logged in as an administrator. And what you can see what an agenda would actually look like. These are called modules, and I'm gonna focus on the meeting module. And under the meeting's module, as you can see, you can have different types of meetings. You're not limited to just the board meeting. If you have a cabinet meeting, if you have more sessions, any type of meeting that should conduct through the district can be found here within the meeting module. I'm gonna go to the actual board meeting module.
Lenita, hold on, something happened here.
Uh-oh, okay.
There we go, okay. I'm trying to hear it. Go ahead.
Okay, no problem. And when I go through the type of meeting, you'll notice the right in this area here. It's gonna actually the date of the meeting. And you'll see the most recent, well, you know, the meeting that's been occurred. But I'm telling you, this is 2016, you know, a meeting. It is gonna go in the change order. I'm creating an actual agenda for February 10th meeting for like the Kingston regular board meeting. So, in this meeting, if you're looking at the actual date, the time, the location, and you'll notice that this meeting is not published. One of the reasons about the software is whenever you actually publish the meeting, you can actually publish the meeting and choose to publish it for one set of times to your authorized users, which would be like your board members. And then you can actually choose to publish it to the public at a better time. You can actually set that. So, if the board wishes to see the agenda, for example, this meeting was truly on February the 10th, and you want to release it to the board on the 7th, I can actually schedule this meeting to be published to the board on February 7th and have it released to the public on February the 9th. You can actually schedule the time when this meeting could actually be available. I want you to know that whenever you publish the meeting, you're able to list items on your agenda, and then you can actually see what visibility the meeting actually has. So, for example, there's an item called the regular monthly meeting. And that, I suppose, is grass and board view only. Board view means the public can see the title but not the content. So, the reason this particular item has a flag besides is because the public can know that you're looking at the minutes for the regular monthly meeting. But because you have a photo on those these those minutes, they're immediately available to the public if they're actually approved those items. Also, what you need to know further down on this agenda where it adds, same going down to, you know, imaginary social security numbers, those items are marked as boxes more confidential, which means these items would not be displayed on the actual agenda from the public perspective, but whatever the board wants, and the board wants to see that, those items. But this is just showing that same format when I'm actually publishing the meeting. I'm choosing to publish it to use authorized users. I want to save and close, and that's gonna show my agenda after it has been published. Whatever's unpublished, there was a yellow line going across the top indicating it's unpublished. But now that it has been published, that yellow line goes away. So, linking up the actual agenda, you can actually navigate through the agenda. I can click on, for example, the call to order. And I can actually see some information, you know, about the call to order. The item called the agenda, you can actually put in, these are called fields, summaries. You can actually put in charts if you would like. Without goals here, you're able to link items from this particular plan up to your goal area to items on your agenda. So, with E-Board, one of the powerful features of E-Board versus any other technology, you have a meeting module, which is you're able to align the items to your agenda to items within your plan. The plan sets your direction, obviously, and the goals are tied to items directed on your agenda. You can also have supporting documents. You can do so as a PDF or any other app which you like to use as a supporting document. You can also put links in the item as well. If I click on this other item with add minutes, you're able to pick sticky notes also. Do you see this little icon here? This is called sticky notes. The reason you're seeing these items here with added to symbol, I'm an administrator, so I have administrative rights to do that. As board members, obviously, you have to be adding or editing or copying and removing items or deleting items on the actual agenda. But as the district clerk, we have these same permissions in creating the meeting and setting up the meeting. But as a board member, we generally want to do is create what's called a sticky note. A sticky note is not more than an electronic post-it. So, you gotta see what to do is you can actually click on the sticky note and type in, for example, a reminder for there's some discussion going on during the meeting, and you want to actually make note of that item. You can type it in the sticky note and click save and close. When you do so, you're gonna notice there are lines in the sticky note indicating that you've actually written some information. But also on the items, I'm not trying to be too very clear, but there's a little icon indicating that you're sticking notes for minutes. An important piece about the sticky notes is the sticky notes is specific to the user ID and password, meaning that no one can see your sticky notes except you, unless, of course, you're looking over your neighbor's shoulder and you can see those electronic device. But other than that, as an administrator, no one can actually see your sticky notes. Whenever you use your sticky notes, for example, you're at work and you attach the sticky notes even your laptop, if you were to go home, you have like an iPad or any type of tablet and draw onto the actual agenda, that sticky note will still be there because that sticky note is listed again to the user ID and password. Another thing I wanna have to show you on this particular item I've put on now that the content was the regular monthly meeting. And this is the content of that item. Whenever I was publishing the agenda, I was telling you that this item, this board member review only meeting, is a public one and see the title. A checkpoint in another way with your administrator or the district clerk that you're looking at the agenda, as the board member returns items to the review, you see all of the content. So, if you're waiting to actually approve your minutes from like the previous month, all the content can be here. If I put on, for example, visibility mode as administrator, this is true flash as board review item, the public should not see the content. So, if I put on public, you're gonna see only the title but not the content. So, if you're actually in your meeting and you're using E-Board, your agenda will be projected from the public's perspective to make sure that the right items are displayed to the public. When you're the board member and you're logged into your device, you'd actually see the content. If I go to the voting member, which is a board member, this is how it would look like from your perspective. You'd have all of the content, and then you have the actual sticky notes. Any questions about that?
Any question?
No questions?
Not at this point.
Okay, it's my... I can hear you like a story. Okay, so now, now that I've activated how's an actual administrator? And if I'm... If I'm now to get a little bit further down the agenda, where it has, for example, we sit at a principal's relation under student support hearing, you're gonna see that there's a C next to that item. That indicates that that item is board confidential. Yeah, you'll also see it's next to change those, the social security numbers down, those social security numbers. And if I were to click on these items, as an actual board member, it's gonna see that that item is actually on your agenda. As administrator, I can see it as well. But if I go to the visibility mode and look at it from the public's perspective, you're gonna see that the agenda is changing, and those items are not displayed on the agenda because those items have been marked as board confidential. So, within the software, you have many ways to actually view the actual agenda. But as the board member, obviously, you're gonna have to be slightly restricted because obviously, you're not creating the agenda. You have to list items, you have to list items on the agenda. One of the things that you're gonna do is this, why are you on the agenda? Navigating through the agenda, you'll be actually creating sticky notes. Any questions about that?
Any question?
No questions?
Not at this point.
Okay, it's my... I can hear you like a story. Okay, so now, now that I've activated how's an actual administrator? And if I'm... If I'm now to get a little bit further down the agenda, where it has, for example, we sit at a principal's relation under student support hearing, you're gonna see that there's a C next to that item. That indicates that that item is board confidential. Yeah, you'll also see it's next to change those, the social security numbers down, those social security numbers. And if I were to click on these items, as an actual board member, it's gonna see that that item is actually on your agenda. As administrator, I can see it as well. But if I go to the visibility mode and look at it from the public's perspective, you're gonna see that the agenda is changing, and those items are not displayed on the agenda because those items have been marked as board confidential. So, within the software, you have many ways to actually view the actual agenda. But as the board member, obviously, you're gonna have to be slightly restricted because obviously, you're not creating the agenda. You have to list items, you have to list items on the agenda. One of the things that you're gonna do is this, why are you on the agenda? Navigating through the agenda, you'll be actually creating sticky notes. Another thing from the district clerk's perspective, if you have an item that is your regular monthly meeting minutes that requires actions, you can see this is a... As the recommendation bill, which means you're gonna take actions and actually vote on that particular item. However, if it's like you're looking at the agenda, that district clerk can actually go ahead and actually, whatever she records the premises beginning of the meeting to make sure that people are seen there at the meeting. The board members will be listed here as well as the superintendent. And you'll notice this area that says can vote. Obviously, the superintendent's not able to vote, but the superintendent is actually a member of the board, the board of education for the... The member of the executive business of the board. So, I can click on select all, I'm saying that everyone is actually present. When I click save and close, anything that, you know, we have people that are actually at our meeting. If I were looking at this particular item on regular monthly meeting, that board, district clerk, will actually have this minute drop down on her screen. So, it's gonna be able to do that. If she records the action, what's she gonna be able to do? Have Mark to actually say motion, how everyone actually voted on a particular item. And that information will be recorded simultaneously. You see, we're saying to vote here. So, the names will be displayed here, and you'll note from that example, the superintendent isn't listed. So, for example, with board members or trustees, you can actually mark to make the motion, to second this, and how everyone actually voted for this particular item. If everyone votes yes, you can click the button here. And then her minutes will indicate that someone will be unanimously voted. If, by chance, everyone doesn't vote unanimously for that particular item, we can go and actually mark if you voted no for that particular item. And then it would actually be broken down by the number of votes, you vote yes versus the number of votes no. So, just to let you know, in E-Board, you're not actually voting with the E-Board, but your voting is recorded in E-Board. So, once that's done, and, you know, the district clerk is recording minutes during each area of the agenda, which you can, for example, the usual call to order at 6:30 PM or whatever time. So, the unit's actually called to order, and she's gonna click save, and then she'll go to the next item. So, she's recording the minutes during the actual meeting. So, then after the minutes have been recorded, I'm gonna actually show you what that looks like. I can import a recommendation, and I can go to you make the motion, you second this. And, you know, everyone actually voted, and I put a couple of them here. And now, what you're gonna be able to see is looking at the minutes after she's actually recorded, uh, everyone has actually voted. And if I can only a couple of this version of the agenda, you can actually see this is where your logo actually is displayed here. The members who are able to vote were... The superintendent will not be listed as the voting members. There'll be a separate line for that. And you can see the meeting was called to order. The motion was raised by this particular trustee or board member. The voting wasn't unanimous, and this way that the voting is actually broken down. One of the things after the meeting has been published is you can actually receive an email notification letting you know the meeting is available for you to review. When you receive the email notification, that email notification, when I click on that, just to show you what that looks like. You're gonna only... If you have, for example, administrators in your district that are listed as an authorized user, it's not listed, so these are listed here. They would only see the agenda if you include the copy of the agenda in the email. They would only see the agenda based on their commission. So, for example, those items that are marked as board confidential, if I didn't have permission to see confidential items, I would see the copy of the agenda. The items that are marked as confidential would not be emailed to me. Because the permissions are defined, and that's gonna kind of set the tone in terms of who's able to see what, how it's due actually without the email notification. So, what happens is the... The trustees, or you guys are all receiving actual email, but the copy of the agenda is in the email. And you can actually click on the email from wherever you like to use it. Log into E-Board, you can actually navigate through the agenda. Even though you may have the... It's listed in your email, which is the copy of the email. If you want to go into the agenda itself to ask for, you know, the sticky notes,[1399.68] can do so from your actual email. So I just wanted to give you a, um, a little bit of, um, overview of how some of these modules work. Is there anything else, or anything that, um, the trustees you wrote back, we see, or you have any questions about, I'm being mindful of your time as well?
You have a question about something you'd like to say?
Well, yeah, uh, one of the questions that my board members have is accessing files. How, uh, how is it kept on the, the eBoards? And, um, so if you could show us something about, like, you know, older meetings and documents that are attached to those meetings?
Oh, okay. For example, so if I were to go to the meetings, the module, now that a board meeting, all of your meetings are stored here. You can actually see any ones that were actually held here. And you can actually click on, um, those agendas, so if you have them as an attachment, like you have the attachments on your agenda, now I'm not sure what on this particular agenda is gonna have attachments. Um, let's see, hold on one moment, let's see. Okay, this has an actual supporting document here. So if you want to, um, you can actually search by the information in the attachment or the item on the agenda, everything is fully searchable. So is that what you were asking?
Okay, so, yeah, so like, say I wanna look for an annual report from two thousand and thirteen, I would just put that in and be able to search the, the entire board doc?
Correct. And what I'm able to do is click on, um, like, for example, if I type in, um, I don't know what would be in this particular site, but if I just, for, for example, look for best, I can look for the past two years, five years, or all years, and then you choose the module for what you're actually searching for, uh, that's it, so we're looking at meetings now. But if you have, like, your policies, you actually search your policies as well, and then you can actually click on the search button here, and then it's gonna actually show you, I'm not sure if the end of meetings actually have the word best in it, but it's still, it's gonna show you those meetings in which, um, bests were addressed.
Okay.
And so if you like to click on the actual item itself, the word is actually highlighted in yellow.
Okay.
Does that help you, this part?
Yeah.
And then you can just click on the media app and it'll go over.
Lenita, could you, could you explain very briefly about the workflow?
The workflow for, um, it comes up, the administrators, where they actually, um, could never even, it's gonna be.
You can have someone, how you can have someone actually, uh, reciprocates that?
Right, I mean, from the board's perspective, they don't, they don't wanna see that, but they'll see the end result. So, for example, um, what Todd's referencing is this, for example, this item that says contract for cafeteria services, if you're a director of, like, nutrition, or whoever is responsible for this particular item, within the software, what you're able to do is you can actually assign it to that person, so in the doc desk, you can actually assign that item, I'll just choose my name here, and click on save and close. So what happens, that person is, um, gonna be sent an actual email saying they are responsible for populating the item on the agenda, and this is what the email actually looks like. I'm gonna try to close this up a little bit. It shows that I'm responsible for an item called contract for cafeteria services, or the board meeting dated on February the tenth. So what I'm gonna be able to do is go into the actual agenda, into my work in progress, the work in progress, um, let me combine this here, here, am I already going to my work in progress? If I were logging that myself, I can actually see the item I'm responsible for, and then I can actually submit it, and I would submit it to either the district clerk or the superintendent, whoever's gonna actually approve the item on the agenda, and then that person can just mark it as approved, and it's gonna automatically be populated on the agenda, populated with whatever feels that's completed. So, but that workflow is, was done on, from the administrative level, um, as a board member, you would see the finished product. So that's one of the features that you're able to do, so therefore, whoever's responsible for, um, like, for example, the, if the first one has a construction on, on fees, or landscape company, he's a ground maintenance, a post of the district clerk, piling all that information or receiving it as an email, that person would be accountable for their particular item on the agenda, and what can be created is an actual template that matches the language, uh, um, the way you connect your, your meeting's content. So, and I could definitely show you more of that, um, but I know that from a board's perspective, if you're looking at the, the end users, but from administrative perspective, that would be something that, um, administrators actually do, that they're accounting for, they're accountable for their own work.
Lenita, can you just speak real quickly about what happens if they don't have internet connection, uh, here in the building, for whatever reason, if they lose internet connection, what would they do?
Definitely, Kathy, thank you so much for mentioning that. Um, the district clerk, if you are having your meeting, for example, an area that's not necessarily, um, you don't, you don't know if the internet's gonna be working that strongly, um, what you're gonna be able to do is as soon as your meeting is completed or, or created, one of the recommendations that we have is that you can actually download an offline version of the meeting. So there's a way that you actually go into, um, the meeting, and you download the meeting, so, but you're not gonna miss out on having the business of the meeting. Now, I'm, I'm, you're not able to record live minutes, obviously, because you're looking at an offline version of the meeting, but you can navigate through the agenda, and if you're online, on the offline version of the agenda. And that's very beneficial, because there are really things that could impact your internet connection. So we encourage regardless of if, uh, if the location has a stronger signal or not, we do recommend that, um, you download each meeting, just in case you have an issue with the internet, and make sure you're using the computer that you downloaded the meeting to, otherwise you're not gonna be able to access it.
Thank you, Lenita.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions from the board? Yes.
Is that just the board clerk that can download the meeting, or can every board member download?
I'll just hear about some, all right?
He wanted to know if just the board clerk could download the meeting, or if everybody could?
Well, everyone can, everyone can actually download it, I'm sorry, everyone can actually download the meeting. I was just saying that typically maybe it's the board clerk that downloads it and projects it and has it navigated through that. Yeah, but anyone has the, the access to download the offline version.
Uh, what kinds of devices can they use to, uh, use the, uh, board meeting minutes?
The board meeting minutes?
Uh, what kind of devices they, can they use with eBoard?
Um, you can use any device with eBoard, I mean, you could actually, now, we have an actual meeting app, but the app is designed only for the iPad, that's the actual meeting app, but in terms of eBoard, you can access eBoard and meeting device.
Any more questions from the board? I think they would like to see. Do you understand?
Any more questions? Dr. Chauwitz.
I mean, I'm sure if we moved administration, we'd have some time to practice and kind of work with it, but is there a cost associated with doing this?
Yes, there is.
Yep.
And I, and I will slide it.
Okay. It is debatable as well.
It's debatable.
Yes, it's fully debatable.
Cool, okay.
And then there's training for, for me, as well as for the board to?
Yes, yes, there is. Um, you will get training from eBoard themselves, as well as my staff, and you will have continual support from my staff. Uh, Lenita, can you show very quickly the online help feature that you have?
I just again, uh, whenever you log into your eBoard, actual green help tab, I'm gonna expand that, and what you're gonna get is just this on y'all, uh, based on your permission with an eBoard, obviously. So therefore, you can actually see which is advantages for board members, if I were to click on more, it's gonna give the information with screenshots in terms of what some of the advantages are. Um, some items have video, you're able to watch the actual video that goes with that particular item. But if you were, um, for example, looking at, um, how do you actually create a meeting, I can click on, um, create a meeting and look at some options here, I can go to the help tab, and I can get information about what I need to do to create an actual meeting type. Click on more, and then there'll be instructions with screenshots on how you actually do that, and there are also videos, like I stated. Um, you can actually print this off if you wanted to, but mind you, it will be a lot of pages, because there are lots and lots of information, and a lot of different things you actually do within eBoard. Um, one of the things also, if your meeting actually follows kind of the same format from month to month, you can actually save it as a template, and you can actually create your meetings based on the actual template, so you're not recreating, um, your, your meeting agenda every month.
Lenita, can this product be used for something other than just board meetings? Can it be used for other types of meetings that they have?
Yes, you can use it for any meeting that you have in your district. Oftentimes, people use it for school council meetings, you have cabinet meetings, you have staff meetings within your actual district, but any type of meeting that you have, you can actually have that created with an eBoard. Um, the important thing is, obviously, whenever you're setting your permission, to make sure the right individuals have access to the right information.
And what about policies?
As part of the training, I would actually share that, um, spend a lot of time on permissions and making sure when you're looking at, um, your meeting types that you've created, that, for example, maybe a board member is, um, actually the role of a board member in one type of meeting where that person may be submitted in another type of meeting, or maybe just an actual attending. So depending on the meeting that's created, we'll make sure the right permissions are given to the right individuals based on the meeting type.
And how do board policies tie in with this product?
Um, with policies, you can actually, you can actually tie your policies to items on the agenda if you have your items, tie your policies currently, um, available, there, you have them on your website, correct? Whether they're all grouped together, or they're broken down by sections?
Both.
Both, okay, so you're able to attach policies, the same way that, um, when I did the actual, um, goal here and the supporting document, you can actually tie your policies as attachments to it currently created, or if you had subscribed to the policy module, which is a different module, your policies can be healthy, or you can search them in the same format, um, and then you can actually attach them as well, um, to items on your agenda.
And this is for board use only, the public wouldn't have access to, we would still post the minutes separately on our website, or?
You would, you, they would be able to access your board minutes that the public is supposed to have through your website that actually attaches to the eBoard website, so there would be a link that would take you right there, and they'd be able to do exactly what she's showing you there, and they would only see the public version of the meeting minutes.
That's correct. They would, for example, the way I'm actually logged in, if I log out, and I only publish this particular meeting to, um, the board, let me publish it to the public part, you can actually see that, um, this is, it's a, from the public perspective, it's not even displayed as well, I mean, there's no, no, any certified, but under meetings, like, for example, board meetings, I can just choose, like, a meeting, like, January, so the public 2015, you can actually see that, um, there's certain information that I can see, um, as the meeting, this item, how it was, the board member, I mean, the public's not seeing it currently, so. So the, the public, obviously, can't see sticky notes, but they can add it to the actual agenda. So the public's actually looking at the items that, um, Eva last published, actually stated.
You can log on to Allister Vote See's and just look on the eBoard icon, and look at all the Allister Vote See board meetings, those are all public minutes that you can see, so if you're interested, www.allistervotesee.com, and look at what you think of, pray you can see. Good question, Kathy. Are there any others?
Now, could you record video? For example, if we have a presentation where someone's doing a video or a PowerPoint, can that be included in the videos?
It can, you can actually attach that. If the video is PowerPoint, or definitely, um, there, there are ways, there's a different, I can show you how you can actually, um, put, embed the video or attach it in actual PowerPoint.
Good question, Kathy. Any others?
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
No, I think that, thank you, Lenita, we really appreciate your time. I think, uh.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present to you. If you have any other questions, um, Kathy or Pat can actually, so you gotta contact me, and I'd gladly help you with any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lenita. Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
And, um, I'll let Gary take care of that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Clearly not that good a technology. It's all for you. All right, thank you so much, and, um.
Thank you.
If you need contacting you.
Yep, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, so I'm gonna return to Dr. Penolino for the rest of the remainder of the superintendent's report.
Okay, um, just a couple more things in the superintendent's report. First thing, uh, that is on the agenda and a few things that aren't on the actual agenda that I needed to add last minute, but, um, I would like to, uh, recognize three of our board members tonight. I think this, uh, really impressive how our board members continue to be awarded the, uh, awards through the state, or through the New York State, um, School Boards Association based on the work that you all do, obtaining your training, over and above the training that's required for board members. And, and I've been doing this for a while now, I think in the last two years, I've given more of these out to board members here in Kingston than I thought, than I ever have, so I, I'm very pleased that you're, that you take your board service so seriously, that you take the classes, and you're interested in the workshops that are out there, uh, to better your ability to help us govern this school district, so I, I greatly appreciate it, and I think the New York State School Boards Association also appreciates it, because they are awarding three of our board members tonight, um, with awards, with achievement awards, and the board achievement, first of all, there's a board achievement award for Mrs. Kathleen Collins. We have the Board Excellence Award for Mr. James Michael, who is not here tonight, we'll get that to him. And lastly, we have the Board Mastery Award for our board president, Mrs. Nora Shear, and with the Board Mastery Award, you also get the Bill Ball, so. Just a couple other things for the superintendent's report tonight. Uh, we talked last week about graduation requirements and, uh, having a short presentation, the board received something in their packet. Uh, we will be having a pres- a presentation on the eighteenth, but in the meantime, what we've done was, on the website, we've placed, we've placed for the parents to, uh, to, to see and to locate and to, uh, access the resources, who they need, if they have questions, who to call, sort of a small article with a, with a, a chart telling them who to call, if they need to know things about their child's graduation requirements and any changes, uh, to that requirement. So we have that, and then it gets selected on the eighteenth, we will do another, uh, we will do a presentation for the board and for the public here. The board retreat, we talked, we've been talking about a board retreat, we had to cancel our last board retreat because of the weather, cancel everything because of the weather. So we're back, we're back talking about dates again. Uh, while Janice White, who was gonna do our, our hearing is, our retreat, is away for a, a month or so, I have reached out to Jim Butterworth, and he has three or four different people on his staff who are willing to step in, uh, they have her materials, she did her work, her backup work for this, and they're familiar, and they, and she's talked to them by phone, so that anyone that were willing, they were looking for us to give them some dates. So we're back on that, and I mean, I'm not asking, we don't have to have this conversation today, but if you would, um, I'm gonna have Camille kinda send out a, a, a survey of when we can get, when we can get ourselves together, um, for that retreat, um, sometime between now and mid-March, March? I know it was a board, a board goal to have, to have retreat, so I wanna make sure that we do our best to get a facilitator in here. Budget forum that was canceled last week has been rescheduled for February nineteenth. It will be here in Sione at six PM. We do have a couple of, uh, other events coming up on February eleventh, Kingston City School District and the Kingston Special Education Parent Group will be holding a joint workshop for parents. Will be here from six to seven thirty in the boardroom, again, that's February eleventh. On February tenth, I mentioned last, last board meeting, we have the DDI parent meeting, the Data Driven Instruction Parents Meeting at Chambers at six thirty, it's gonna run probably six thirty to eight. So three days, the eleventh, the tenth, and the nineteenth are, uh, dates to kind of remember. We had some questions, uh, there was an article on the website about the K- Kingston High School late buses and what, what the situation was there, and I think one of the board members had asked if we could just briefly discuss it here after the presentation, so I've asked, uh, Mrs. Bonville, if she would just give the board a brief update on that, what's being done and why.
All right, Kathy, you can probably hear me. Um, basically, the, the whole reason for the late buses, um, in Radyatta High School was a safety issue, um, in terms of, um, you know, the weather and students inside, um, and even the weather has been, um, you know, is, is not conducive to having the students, um, you know, kind of hanging about. The other part of it was, um, some of the students did not feel that should be staying for ninth period, didn't feel that they could, because it was getting a little bit unruly, um, with kind of everyone hanging around, um, so they really felt that they needed, um, a way to kind of streamline the process in terms of, uh, students that really need to be there for the purpose of learning, rather than, my friends are staying, and so I'm gonna stay too. Um, so with that, the system that they came up with, um, is basically a pass system, any student that needs to stay, um, has to produce a pass, they are to report to the small cafeteria. If they do not have a pass, they have to go back to either their teacher that they stayed with, or the club advisor, or what have you, whoever they're, they're reporting with. And then they have a system where, um, a security monitor is at the bottom of the MJM hill and kind of announces when the bus arrives, so as the students are kind of, you know, congregating in the small cafeteria, you're then able to go out, um, to the bus, kind of in an orderly fashion, um, and it's, it's a much, it's a much more streamlined process rather than, you know, kids just kind of hanging around and waiting for, um, you know, events to kind of occur as they might.
What happens if they can't produce a pass?
They have to go back to the teacher, or whoever they're staying with.
But if they did, say that, say a student was hanging around in January, are they given, like, we have the bus at home, right, so, that's been given a warning or ten, something?
Right, right, um, it would be, it would be a disciplinary, not a.
But they can still take a bus home.
What about, what about classes that are regularly scheduled during ninth period? For instance, chorus, mixed chorus is a, is a regularly scheduled, credit-bearing, uh, course, uh, every other day. So all of those, any of those students, every day, every time they, chorus meets, they have to have a pass, and what, and what, uh, how does that impact the teacher as well? I mean, you know, there's maybe sixty, sixty kids in the chorus.
It was my understanding that any of the students that were outside of the parameters of a regular, regular class, like, in that instance, Mr. Shaw said that they would not have to produce a pass, um, that was my understanding, I can definitely double check that with Mr. Shaw.
But then how does the, how does the monitor know who is in a regular class and who isn't?
Right, um, I'd have to double check that with Mr. My heart, how they're, how they're monitoring that.
So is the, is the, I, I, I heard from s- one parent that the passes were already in effect, is that the case, or what is new and what's not new in this new procedure?
The pass went into, the, this new procedure went into effect this past week.
But what about, someone told me that the passes had, had been a pre.
Um, the passes were always required to get onto the late buses, but what would happen is sometimes kids would stay for twenty minutes with a teacher, and then they would kind of wander, and I think this is encouraging them to stay for the extra help, um, you know, make sure that they're at the activity that they're supposed to be at for the whole period, and, because the time will be on the pass, but for classes like you're describing, I would think they could create the season's pass that would have laminated. We've done things like that in the past, but it was my understanding, from what I read, that the monitors were notifying the person in cafeteria that the bus was coming up the hill.
Correct.
To pick them up in front of MJM, which makes a world of sense, because that's a hill that gets quite icy in this kind of weather. Is, is that true?
Yeah, and then the bus pulls up to the flagpole, yeah, the MJM flagpole.
Okay. Okay, 'cause before that, they had to walk down to the bus.
Correct.
So that would be safer.
I can double check on the regular classes.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonville.
Thank you. Any other question?
One other item, um, and I don't know if we wanna discuss this as a new business, or if it's part of my report, but I will bring it up, and we can, the president of the board can direct it either way. Um, we, myself and the clerk of the board were having a conversation about our board meetings, obviously, we know we made a change, um, in March, um, we have a February twenty-fifth board meeting, then we are out.
March. It's March.
And we have Feb- we have a February twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
We have an eighteen.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, it's March. We have a March twenty-fifth board meeting, then we are out on the twenty-seventh through the seventh of March, and we come back of April, and then we come back on April eighth and have a board meeting.
No, we come back on the seventh.
Seven.
We have a board meeting scheduled for the next night.
We have, we have the next, may have a board meeting. So we have two board meetings with two days of school in between. So we wanted to have a discussion about that, just based around what would be on that agenda, and what would the board, um, wanna do with that time.
Okay, well, here's my take on, looking at it, we, if we move that to the following Wednesday, we create a situation where now we have a board meeting, um, two weeks back to back, the fifteenth and the twenty-second. However, the twenty-second is a board meeting we have to have, because that's the votes election, so.
And we have to adopt their budget.
And we have to adopt their budget, so we can't move the twenty-second to later in the month, that's gotta stay where it is. So either we leave April eighth as is, or we move it to the fifteenth and have two meetings in a row, two weeks in a row, so. So.
My thought on, on this was that two days of school business, and we'd have to have another agenda meeting. It wouldn't even be two days. We'd have to already have an agenda meeting when we just had a board meeting. And that just didn't make any sense. So like, that's why I suggested we, we look at this to see if maybe we should move it back a week. Because seven days of, of workdays would be better than two.
I'm sorry, move what back?
The April 8th meeting.
Move it forward.
To the 15th.
I think she means move it forward to the 15th.
To the 15th. Change the date.
Which means two meetings in a row, two consecutive weeks. Yes?
Well, we have to have, when is the board going to receive the budget? I mean, we have, we have to approve the budget by April 22nd. So when, when are we going to have the budget in order to have discussion before April 22nd? Or are we going to?
We don't know how we're even going to create a budget. We don't have any state aid runs or anything to base a budget on, so we're working on that.
I was just going to say, but Mrs. DePerna kind of addressed one of my concerns, knowing the day-to-day operations of how you make up the agenda, et cetera. My initial reaction was, is even if we're not here, there's still things that happen during spring break and matters that might need our attention. But for example, those early committee meetings, policy, et cetera, and beginning of, those have to be pushed too because we're not going to meet during spring break. So there really wouldn't be anything coming out of there. I just wonder if it was too much of a lag. Well, if something did come up, we could call another meeting or emergency.
My only concern was that March 25th, and then, you know, we, we're in, we're having a meeting on the 25th, then we'd be in session 26th and the 27th, and then we'd be out. So two days after a board meeting, we'd have to have another board packet ready, and I don't know what I would put in a board packet two days later. That, that's what concerned me. So.
Hopefully, there'll be a budget number, so hopefully, there'll be a budget to talk about. Right, I mean, I guess part of a concern would be if we put, so the 15th, I should, I should have a calendar for me, so the 15th and then the 25th?
22nd.
22nd. I mean, that's only two weeks to really talk about it, but there's not a lot of time to make any changes if we can or have to, or at least if we, if we have it. I understand what you're saying about just the few days, but that can be a budget for the future.
Maybe that's up to Mr. Shaw.
Well, in terms of the budget, I mean, we don't have a state aid run, but if, I presume that the way Cuomo is, is, is operating is that if he doesn't get whatever we got last year would be what we get this year. Right? I mean, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, because he talked about an increase. The increase was the kind of, on history, foreign thing adopted, but if there wasn't, those reforms aren't adopted, then I presume that we have to assume that the aid, the state aid would be the same.
I don't assume that the formula, how they distribute the aid is going to be the same, that the aid will be the same. We don't know, we can't assume anything with what the governor's currently doing right now. He's saying if it's, it'll be an increase of 300 million if they don't pass his, his agenda, 1.1 billion if they do pass his agenda. I don't know how he's going to distribute that 300 million. They don't follow the foundation formula anymore. They, it's pretty much whatever they decide in the back room somewhere, and we really have no, I mean, we're going to, we're going to do our best to make our estimates with or without state aid runs. But they, you have to give you an exact date tonight, I don't have that.
You, you're having a budget forum on February 19th.
Yes.
How many more do you plan on having before, do you plan on having another one in March?
I plan, I really, kind of like we did last year, I plan on having them opposite of every board meeting up until the budget vote.
Did your question answer, or?
Yeah. No.
No?
No, I mean, it's a, it's a weird situation. We don't have what we need, but we need to have a conversation about it so we can make a decision, right?
I, I think that's a good, I think it's a good point, and we have the 25th, and then we won't have a lot on agenda, so we can spend the majority of our time talking about the budget. Now, I am in the week of spring break, so I'll be, you know, I'll be here working on this, so I will have things to discuss with the board.
Maybe that's the topic that, and that's what we'll.
We won't be tied up with resolutions, I don't think we can talk more about the budget than anything else.
Absolutely, but in the meantime, we can, as individuals, write to our legislators.
Well, on that matter, the Legislative Action Committee of the Austin County School Works Association received an email today, I think it was today, with an attachment from.
The, we received an email today with an attachment from Senator Seaword, and he's introduced a bill in the Senate to repeal the gap elimination adjustment, and it's been co-sponsored with Senator Anador and one other member. I don't remember the second, the second co-sponsor's name. But if we can get someone in the Assembly to sponsor that same bill, and the way, the way the legislation is written is that it goes into effect 30 days after adoption. So our, our goal for the Legislative Action Committee was to eliminate the gap elimination adjustment for this year. So we've made progress. There's a bill introduced to that, to that in the Senate, and if we can get it introduced in the Assembly, then maybe they can adopt it before April, or by, you know, quickly, so that it would go into effect.
It sounds wonderful. I think there's indication that legislators are listening, that they know this is a concern statewide.
Right.
And we had our petition up, as did our neighboring districts, so I hope everyone had an opportunity to sign that.
I was in Albany yesterday, meeting with Senator Anador, and he's, he's committed to, obviously by signing onto this bill, to eliminating the gap elimination adjustment, but Mr. Shaw, he's correct, I mean, we need it in both, on both sides of the table. Both sides of the aisle, I should say.
That's all I have. Opportunity for some bipartisan action on the state, on the legislature, if they can accomplish that.
So, I think this isn't mainly necessarily to the schedule, but on that note, would it make sense for, you know, Dr. Peddino or one of us to contact someone in Cahill? Okay, all right, great.
And members of the public as well, can be helpful. So it looks like we'll leave it on April 8th and, and move that to a budget discussion.
Yep.
Okay, that'll be our primary focus.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you. That is all for my report.
Okay, then I'll move along to approval of the minutes of January 21st. Entertained a motion?
So move.
Okay. Any discussion, amendments or additions or corrections? Okay, hearing nothing. All those in favor approving the minutes of January 21st, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Extensions? And on to consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members of board would like to be pulled? Mrs. Lau?
S-22, S-23, and BOE-50.
Okay. S-22, S-23, S-23, and BOE-50. Yes, Mrs. Collins.
B-78, please.
B-78?
B-78.
B-78. Any others? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda minus S-22, S-30, BOE-50, and B-78.
So both.
S-23.
I'm sorry.
S-23.
S-23 as well. S-23, okay, and S-23. And you seconded? I think Mr. Shaw, Mr. Shaw, you seconded? S-22, S-23, S-30, BOE-50, and B-78 have been pulled.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, discussion. All right, so we're approving the minutes of January 21st minus S-22, S-23, S-30, BOE-50, and B-78.
There is an S-30.
There's no S-30, that was 23?
It was S-23 instead of S-30.
S-23.
BOE-50.
Wait a minute. S-22?
Yeah.
S-23. 23.
BOE-50.
BOE-50, okay, thank you.
And B-78.
It's time for my miracle era, for sure. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, we need to vote?
Yes, so we're going to vote. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so we'll take a look at S-22. Entertained a motion for S-22? Okay. And discussion.
I actually pulled that because, oh, I'm sorry, I actually pulled that because I don't, I guess I don't understand it, and I don't understand voted on S-23 either. So this has voted that the Board of Education has no objections to the recommendations of the committee. Now, on, for instance, the S-23, there are 28 dates on there, like 12 months old, and we've had five board meetings since then. So I, maybe I'm not understanding the whole. I don't know why, why are we just getting it now and what is it? I mean, do we, do we ever get notices of what this is?
It's actually on the web. Here available. Yeah, it is on your, in your board packet on the web.
On the web, but we don't get it?
Yeah, they're on.
They're in the file.
They're in the file.
But not here?
Not on paper, no, because some of them can be quite thick.
Okay. But does it normally take four months?
I, I don't know the answer to that because I get that from a special ed department.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know how they do that.
I, I would have a vote specifically of the, of the ones that have had that lengthy time, and I could get information on that, I don't have specifics.
So has, have they all been implemented then, I'm assuming, since it's been from October?
Um, I, I'd have to double check on the specific ones. I mean, I think that the recommendations are made at the meetings and what they put forward. I would, I would assume that if, if it was something that was decided on the committee, that the services are being implemented, but I would like to check that just to be absolutely sure.
It just seems like a lot of dates that we're just now voting on this. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of S-22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. S-23, I'll entertain a motion to accept S-23. Does the same thing?
Same thing.
Same thing, okay. All right, we have a second. Well, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those, I'm sorry.
In answer to your question, I mean, I've always been told that, you know, this is a formality really, we, we have to approve them. I mean, I don't think there's ever been, there's maybe one time that I recall that, that a recommendation from the special ed, either for the IDEA or for the 504, has been, you know, has been even modified with the question. It's something that the board has to do, but we really don't have any authority to change them. Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, so it's.
So, I mean, I've read through them. We wouldn't, if we spotted something, we wouldn't have any authority to pull that and specific recommendation with CSE, we're just, and just have it.
If by some reason you had the knowledge, more knowledge than the CSE, our CSE people or whatever, and you had a change that you thought we would bring that to them and let them look at it and determine whether you were wrong before, but, you know, we obviously wouldn't ignore it.
Yeah, no, I just look for like declassifications or things, big changes in IPs, something like that, but.
But even the information that we get, we don't have a student, we don't have a student, there's no student name.
Correct.
So, you know, the information that would be, is, I mean, we used to get printouts of the, of each, you know, there was anywhere from 10 to 50 pages long, it seems, and we stopped doing that because there was no relevant information or no discernible information that, you know, other than looking at some of the types of services that were, that were called for, but we, you know, but certainly, no, no name is ever attached to any of the information that's available to the board.
Well, I do trust that, that the ones who are CSE people, the head of special ed, they are the experts on this, so they, you know, I just wondered, I, I'm new at this, so I'm wondering about it.
You know, whenever you have a question, ask. Okay. BOE-50, I'll entertain a motion to accept, what, sorry?
We didn't.
That's what we didn't vote on.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought we had. Okay, all those in favor of S-23, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries. BOE-50, entertain a motion to accept BOE-50?
So both.
Okay, discussion.
Well, I pulled that also, but I think I have my answer on that also. So the, the head of the director of special ed, he can execute settlement agreements on behalf of the district.
Correct. And that pertains to what David, the case that David discussed with us in the exact question.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, any other discussion? All those in favor of BOE-50, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, B-78, I'll entertain a motion to accept B-78.
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion.
I pulled it.
Yes.
Just want, just to highlight the fact that we're the recipient, JW Bailey Middle School is the recipient of generous donation for $150 worth of library books from the parent Jennifer Politech, Politec, I hope I'm pronouncing it properly, but I'm just thankful for all those donations.
And we do appreciate it. Okay, all those in favor of B-78, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And on to Board of Education, and Mrs. Collins, I'm turning over to Policy Committee.
I'm there already. Tonight, the Policy Committee has policy 5500 student records attached for the first reading. It's pretty standard as far as the Ms. Ba recommendations. Any changes that we had made are in bold. We have a meeting coming up this Friday, February 6th, in this room at 9:00 AM, and we're going to be discussing a few policies and beginning, what I understand to be at least, an initial philosophical discussion on restorative justice. Dr. Peddino would ask us to begin that discussion, and our lead counsel, Mr. Shaw, I really just wanted to be joining us as well.
It'll be on the March 6th.
March, okay, I got something to keep, maybe I have two emails tonight.
Yeah. Dr. Peddino forwarded to all the board members the restorative justice policy from Buffalo District on January 22nd, so find it as attachment, two attachments to your email on January 22nd.
Can I just ask, can I take a poll? How many people did receive that?
The Buffalo?
The Buffalo.
Didn't or did?
Did receive it.
Received it.
So only three people out of?
Well, I don't know that I've received it or not, I didn't notice it.
Okay, I'll go back and I'll, I'll re.
It was given after the meeting, but I did get it.
I'll go back and resend it.
The email from you?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you did, okay. So half.
That'll be helpful maybe in preparation for the meeting.
Our conversation, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
David Shaw said he's not coming to this Friday?
March 6th, I just looked up the email for him. He, he's available on March 6th.
I thought I got something that said confirmed, but we'll talk about it afterwards.
We did, I did, earlier today.
You confirmed with him for tomorrow?
For Friday.
For Friday.
For Friday.
And just before the board meeting, he had confirmed an email.
Okay.
I will, I will double check with him.
When it's talking to, and it's just show behind my back. Okay, we'll straighten that out and send out an email to everyone tomorrow.
Yes.
I've set a few questions about this policy.
I've sent a few questions about this policy, which I know is pretty standard and that we've had for a long time. So there are some additions that are added to what is considered directory information, I'm wondering if you could just talk about where those come from?
The directory information?
I don't know if I...
Does it not come from the Michigan's regulations?
Oh, under direct, I can tell you that all of these were recommended by our legal counsel as well, just, I think, to specify, we actually, I believe, I don't have the notes, Mrs. Bowers was doing it, but we took some things out, but any, anything that was in bold was recommended by David or Margo or our legal counsel.
And Michigan's regulations.
Yes.
But do we know why? Like, what is, why, do we know why? Why are they recommending these things? Yep. Can you see?
I got it, thank you.
I'm just wondering what the rationale is behind directory information, that means that, you know, video, the voice, and...
The, the, because I think these all come right from, you know, their concerns, we know, of what things that we're, that we need to make sure we cover.
I think it's more inclusive, exactly, I think, I do remember that, that part, as part of the conversation.
And can you just talk a little bit, I mean, a, a little bit about how, um, so you can opt out of your child being included in, in the directory, having your child information included, correct?
Correct.
Um, and that is through the booklet that comes home at the beginning of the year, is that right?
Yes.
And so you just have a certain number of days within to write to your school principal that you want your child's information excluded?
Correct.
And what happens if you, if you do, you know, your kid's in third grade, you forgot to write your letter for kindergarten, for second, but you write your letter in third grade, is it retroactive or is it only going forward?
Only going forward.
And does it last forever? Do you have to do one every year?
We do it every year.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was the first reading, correct?
Yes.
First reading.
And I do have the email, it says...
So we'll be discussing this.
I do have the email for Friday that says...
Okay, old business. Anyone have old business you'd like to bring up? Mr. Shaughnessy?
Was a, uh, at the last meeting, um, we talked about a summary of the governor's budget messaging and budget being on the, that Kate Heidecker was going to do a summary and put it on her website, is that done?
No, that was not completed yet.
Dr. Jacobowitz?
At the beginning of the year, was it talked about issues with the art room at Bailey?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if you could give us an update on where that is and what's going on?
We're still working with the architects on drawings for that, it's more complicated than, obviously than we think it is, uh, we are, we're still working on it.
So, the situation remains the same?
The, well, no, it doesn't remain the same, there's been movement, and the, the, the situation is still not optimal. I mean, there's been movement into other classrooms, so there's, there's a shared situation going on in some places, and there's, and there's some art being moved from, from room to room. So, you know, that, that classroom, we ended up, we have, now we have a plumbing issue and a heating issue in there, it's not just throwing up a wall. So the architects have developed a new plan that I think would, would work well, um, but they're, they're actually coming, I, they're coming back tomorrow to take a second look. They can have three or four times.
Right, no, I'm sure, it sounds like a complicated situation.
We did seal the floor over the, over the break, see if that would, there were some cracks and there, there were some other issues we tried to do to reduce the, the, uh, noise, but, I mean, I, we know, it was, it's not a great situation.
Right.
We're working to fix it.
Okay, and do you have a sense of when it would be fixed? Like, are we gonna make it this year?
I'll have more of a sense of it after tomorrow.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Yes.
Kind of along the art lines, I just wanted to raise this again, and we had talked about it before, when we brought art back into the sixth grade, we then removed it from the eighth grade, which means that kids who were in sixth grade last year will not, and are in seventh grade this year, will not have art in eighth grade, so they've missed a year. And I just wanted to kind of remind us that as we go into budget season, that we had talked about giving those kids art in eighth grade, kind of as, on a special consideration so that they end up with those years of art in middle schools, I think, yes.
And we do offer studio and art still in eighth grade, so it's not...
But, right, except that this isn't for kids who...
Right, it's for everyone.
Right. Any other old business? New business? Mr. Shaughnessy?
Um, this is something that I was, that I, I told the Parents Association at Kingston High School that I would bring up the last meeting I attended, which was in November, and I neglected to, so I'll bring, but I think it's still an issue. And it has to do with the clocks in the high school, in the classrooms that are not working, uh, and students complain that if they're in the tests, if they're testing in the, in the classrooms and the clocks aren't working, they don't know how mu, they don't know how much time they have left, they can't use their cell phones and, uh, I guess, you know, very few students have, wear watches anymore, or they ever did. So, I promised the, the, I told the Parents Association that I would bring it up at a board meeting, um, and so I have now.
Thank you, and I just said the solution would be battery-powered clocks for exam rooms, um, which are fairly inexpensive. I, I can tell you, twenty-three years at the high school, I don't think they were ever all synchronized or working at St. John's, and that's terrible, but true.
Um, we all received quite a few emails over the past few weeks about pre-K, um, it described about Aunt Jen's current offering of pre-K, that they have sixteen current slots and twenty-eight children seeking those slots, and there was some question about, um, I know there's a lot of issues surrounding it, about JFK and unused allocation, I'm wondering if maybe that's something we could put on...
Well, even, no matter what, how many slots, and it's not slots, it's dollars.
Yeah.
It's no matter how many dollars we allocate to each of these, we, we will do it in an equitable, equitable way moving forward next year, we don't do it based on the number of letters we get from people, we look and see where the needs are, if we have unused slots in some areas, we may make some, do some shifting around. Fifth, doubling someone's allocation is most likely not going to happen, but, you know, there may be some increase in some places and some decrease in others. Um, we're also still working on our own plan as far as, as far as, uh, pre-K is concerned, so, um, there's a lot that going on there, and we know we've been, I know you've all received a lot of emails and we've received some letters, but we, um, you know, every year, we take a look at the need and, you know, just given who's in charge of UPK, she takes a look and she makes the, allocates the slots as they see, um, necessary through all of our community providers. Um, and occasionally you'll have this, kind of a, an uptick of people who want, you know, to get into a certain place because they do, but that, that's, doesn't mean we don't have people who want to get into other places as well, so we try to be our best and do our best to allocate them equitably, um, to all our providers, yeah.
That was my question, was how, whether that's an exam in year by year?
We start, yeah, we start, we'll start examining that, you know, probably in the next couple of months as we move forward to go next year.
And if at the start of a pre-K school year, if, you know, we had out, if, if this is true, if JFK has unused slots and there were still waiting lists in Aunt Jen's, would that be a possibility of moving, shifting those dollars to another facility if, once the school year's already begun, or no?
Yes, we can shift the money around, you know, we can shift the money around, yes.
Because if we don't use that money, it just goes back, right?
Right, but, I mean, like, for example, our pre-K situation is a little bit different because those are our employees, so we don't lay off our employees, so that, that, so it's a little different, but if it were that way, with some of our providers outside, if there were five slots at Little Red that weren't being used, or, or dollars, it's really not slots again, it's, it's dollars, um, we could, we can move those resources to someone who maybe had, had a greater need determined by, you know, our people if they're, they're out there looking around.
And you're saying at JFK, we, we have to keep those faculty employed, but how, I mean, how much, is there any, how many, what's the minimum amount of slots, or dollars, or, you know?
Well, we, we want to serve forty students there.
Forty students, yeah.
Yeah, we want to serve forty, forty students there, so it's, it's our goal.
And this year, how many do we have there?
We're, we're about a half that right now. But we're working on some different ideas for the second half of the year at JFK also, to maybe boost that.
Do we think that's maybe, like, we need more outreach to have...
We're, yeah, there's a lot of different things that we're working on, and then, you know, a lot of it's about transportation, a lot of it's about full day or instead of ha, instead of half day, a lot of it is about, you know, maybe a little more outreach, a lot of it is about competition, so we're, but we're, we're working to do some, to make some changes for the second half of this year, we've finally been in contact with State Education Department as far as UPK, finding what our flexibility is, what we can, things we can and can't do. So we are gonna make some changes at JFK for the second half of the year and hopefully boost that enrollment and make it a, you know, a good experience and quality program for the kids.
One last question, UPK, um, since I'm not as familiar with it, is, is that, JFK, UPK, you don't, do you have to live in the JFK district to go to UPK, JFK?
Not necessarily.
But, to receive, then there's no tran, there is transportation?
There is no transportation.
That's what I thought, okay, so if a parent was willing to transport their child and they're...
Yes.
Can I just interject something, it's important to note that our pre-K aid has been pretty flat for over fifteen years, and, um, the state will say, well, they've increased the dollar amount per capita, but they did it by cutting the number of students we would have, and we have to remember that in addition to our facilities, that GW and JFK, there are seven other community partners for UPK. So the likelihood that all available monies would go to one facility?
Of course, yeah.
Is pretty slim.
I'm just asking questions of the, if, the, the people who are asking for this, could, could receive that information, or maybe I could respond accordingly.
No, I actually was gonna ask exactly that, but, um, you know, so when will those kinds of decisions be made, but my notion is, so, in the next few months.
Yeah, I mean, this, before we leave in June, we'll, probably, like, correct it. It's important, though, that universal pre-K is just, it's a misnomer. Universal means all.
Yeah. It's not all.
We're not funded to provide pre-kindergarten to all at this point.
Wait, so, a new, a new topic?
Sure. Is everybody done with, um, pre-K?
I'm done, I don't feel anyone says anything.
Pre-K, any other discussion, pre-K, okay.
I'm not sure if we ever really debriefed from that twenty-twenty meeting that happened in December, um, but it was a very engaging and interesting meeting, I thought, about different ways the districts might work together regionally to achieve some efficiencies, and, um, we've seen some movement on one of the issues that was discussed, which is countywide transportation, and I was wondering if Dr. Padaleo could speak to kind of what's happening with that.
Um, actually, I'm going to hand off to Mr. Olson because he was at the meeting last Thursday where they talked about this, and I was, um, I was testifying, waiting to testify in Albany, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Olson if he can give us a brief discussion, a description of what went on at the superintendent's meeting last week.
The, uh...
As it pertains to transportation.
Oh, only, only that. Yeah, Ulster BOSI's has hired at the behest of all the districts in the county, a transportation consultant who, um, based on his description, seems to have a pretty broad experience in conducting bidding situations for various districts around the state, particularly out in the western part of the state, and I think he consults with a, a lot of districts, so he was pretty knowledgeable, so he's going to, um, he's made a data request of all the districts, and the districts, he's asking for data to come back to him by, I think it's mid to late February, um, then he's gonna do an analysis and, um, and, and try to figure out if there's a regional solution for the county with respect to, uh, transportation. So, um, I guess to recap it, that's essentially the situation right now, again, he seems, he had, he, he seemed to be pretty knowledgeable, he knows all the vendors around here, he knows them quite well, he knows, you know, who has who and how it all works, so, uh, I think he'll, he'll do this thing and he'll come back and he'll tell the districts what he thinks makes sense, whether a regional solution is, is good for all eight districts or good only for some. He think, he, he told me aside that, um, he thought we were in a particularly good situation since we had a couple of years contracted right now, so that if they came up with a regional solution, if it wasn't in our best interest, we could decline it at this point, and then in two years, come back to it and maybe join it, so, he, you know, he felt like there would be a lot of options, essentially, that's what he said. So it's underway.
I think what you just said about options is most important, so it's clear that he's gonna be putting options on the table for different districts then to be able to consider individually, but also as a whole.
That's the way it struck me, yes.
Question?
Any other questions?
Is there a cost associated with this?
Yes, they didn't talk about the cost, actually.
Okay.
And I'm sure there is.
And I'm sure, and, and I believe it's eight.
Right, my understanding is that with, with the aid, it ends up being about two thousand dollars per district.
Even the districts, there are two districts in the county that actually have their own buses, and even those two districts are gonna join in the study because they're, you know, he convinced them that there might be something in it for them too.
Oh, great. Okay, any other new business?
I have, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have two requests, I would, I would like to receive the, uh, beds enrollment data for October of, uh, two thousand and fourteen, if it's available, and is, and, and when it's available, I'd like to receive, um, enrollment projections that, that, that were done, if they were done as usually is by, through BOSI's, by fax.
Yes.
And I would like to receive, um, percentage attendance, attendance percentage for the year, like, for instance...
For the year or for the month?
Well, they usually have it...
They break it down by special ed, regular ed, I mean, how do you want it?
Do I district, do you want high school, do you want by school building?
By high school?
By school.
Do you want it by grade, you know, how do you want it?
Uh, by school, and I, I'm really concerned about the high school graduation, you know, the high school itself, I wanna see what the percentage is of that.
High school. You want special ed, regular ed, overall, total?
Overall.
It's overall.
Okay. And I think they, they can do that.
It's easy.
Yeah.
It's easy. Yes.
I, I have two things, one is actually pretty quick, the Ulster County School Course Association is meeting next week on the twelfth. Um, I can't make that meeting, I have a work commitment at night, but I'm also the note taker, so I'm wondering if any of my colleagues are going to be willing to take minutes.
All looking at the table.
If anybody is, if anybody is interested, you should let me know, if not, I'll send out, if I don't hear from anyone in a few days, I'll send out a note to the rest of the board, it's not that hard, you just take notes.
Well, I would like to congratulate you on, on, on your last minutes, uh, from the January meeting, they were really very, very thorough. I don't think I could do as well.
Try, and you're mine.
See, now, that's the standard we have to live up to, so we're all really intimidated by it.
You can, that's a good story.
Yes?
Um, I was interested in what Ms. Safran said when she got up and spoke at the, um, public session, I, I'm also concerned about the governor's, um, what he calls the opportunity agenda, um, wait that for a second, um, I, I think that, I know the legislature has to act quickly on some of these things, if they're going to, and this is, the time is now, um, and reading through it, I, there are some really scary implications for our district, for focus districts, for independent receiv, receivership, and, um, it's scary. So, anyway, I would be interested in thinking about how we as a board might respond to some of those and, or speak back to some of those points, um, I know that's complicated because I know we all have different thoughts and opinions, and I know this has to happen quickly, but, um, we used to have a legislative action committee that was, uh, connected to this board, and that kind of went away with the Ulster County School Course Association's legislative action committee, but I'm wondering if it is at work resurrecting that committee so that we can talk about some of these issues, which are pretty, um, serious and pretty, could have some really great impacts somewhere else. And I'd be willing to chair that committee if other folks are interested in participating in that.
It's hard to turn down.
You're siding with us.
It's hard to turn down a, a volunteer to chair a committee.
Okay, so we have Mr. Shaughnessy and Dr. Jacobowitz.
I would be interested in the committee.
And Ms. Guido? Anyone else wanna sign on for legislative action committee, we can take one more? We can add up to four.
We can put Reverend Costin, Mr. Mike.
Mr. Mike?
I'm not in it.
So why don't we...
We got flowers. Okay.
Mrs. Shear, is it okay if I send out an email to this group and we'll hopefully meet quickly and soon and we can talk about...
Yes, so... Okay, so we have, correct me if I, I skipped anybody, Dr. Jacobowitz, Mr. Shaughnessy and Ms. Guido. Okay. Okay. All right, yes. Okay, yes.
Professor Chabot, could you send me the, the documents that you reviewed to, the opportunity agenda or whatever, do you have that or, or I might sue him, Mr. Chabot.
Well, I actually, I mean, I listened, I listened to the, his speech.
It's, it's on the, it's on the web, you can get the whole stretch, yeah.
And then actually he used to do some pretty good review of it. It's long, but you have, you can listen to it and I think there's documentation on that.
Right, and, and then Mr. Kramer also did a couple of speaking engagements with radio stations and analysis of it, so. So there, there is information out there, but you sent him the links, yeah. Okay, great. Any other new business? All right, board member announcements. I, I would like to make one announcement and then turn it over to everybody who's clamoring to speak. Coffee and conversation, the next coffee and conversation is being held at Quick Check on Albany Avenue, seven thirty in the morning, Monday, February ninth. And if you do get up early and you come in for coffee, be able to speak to Dr. Jacobowitz, Dr. Pedolino and me.
So you won't be able to speak to Dr. Pedolino.
Oh, Dr. Pedolino, okay, Dr. Jacobowitz and me.
We're supposed to get a lot. We're supposed to get another snowstorm.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say this one. But if it snows, we won't be there. Yes, yes. If it snows, we won't be there at seven thirty, if there's a delay, no. You have a very long drive away, I have a very long drive away, it's a lot of shoveling. That could be done by seven thirty.
You have a coffee at your house.
Right. Okay, any other board member announcements? Ms. Lau?
I, I guess I should probably bring this up now. I, I went to the last coffee and conversation at Monkey Joe's and no one showed up. So I sat there by myself, you know. But I, I also, when I was running for the board, I had suggested maybe meeting at a community center or the Midtown Neighborhood Center, maybe something at night, maybe the Roundout Gardens, they have a community center. I don't know if this has been done before, but I think we need to go to the people.
We've done it before.
And they don't show up.
We've also done, but Saturday coffee and conversation, Saturday morning has worked with the superintendent. But we did reach out to all of the PTAs and didn't get much of a response. I know that Meyer School did respond and asked for board reps to go. But to my knowledge, that was it, yes.
Um, yes, we're, I think Ms. Guido and I are going on the seventeenth tomorrow. But is it worth issuing another invitation?
Invitation to the PTA?
Yeah.
As we get closer to budget season, they will take you up on it.
Okay, okay, so maybe it's worth putting out there, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll, we send it.
And maybe also if, if we bring the coffee and we bring cookies or something.
I don't think it's the coffee, I think it's, I think it's the timings. Sometimes they have a ban and people are-
During the day, I've gotten emails from a couple of people, they can't make it to that day, they're working, you know, at nine o'clock in the morning. And I understand that, but I don't, I don't know, I think food brings people out and-
I, we've done evening ones and they don't come out for that either because a lot of it is family time.
Yeah, and homework, I understand, I know there's a lot of activity there.
I had, I suggested a venue being, and I'd be willing to do it on Saturday morning, the Winter Farmers Market uptown, I know it's a place where people-
It's better than- Well, we were running up to a referendum, Dr. Jacobowitz did that, she volunteered and she was telling at the farmers market. So, you know what, if you have suggestions for other ways we could reach out to the community other than what we've already tried, or if you wanna try again with something else, please email it to Camille and we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
Go ahead.
Does that sound like a good idea?
Good, thank you.
And, you know, it gives, gives you an opportunity to talk to people you've spoken to before and say, well, when could you-
Well, yeah, when's a good time.
Right. Or, or what would encourage you to come? Maybe it is coffee and donuts or whatever.
Maybe it's soup.
They can hear these cupcakes now.
You, actually, the farmers market sounds like a great idea.
It does sound like a great idea.
Because people flow through there. And if you had a table there, but I think we need to talk to the people who organize it. I, I'm, I guess, because I'm the head of the board. To see if, yeah. Yeah, I'm just a farmer's market board. If, if they would allow us to maybe set up a table there and, you know, we take turns.
I'm telling you take turns.
She'll set up the schedule, we'll take the turn. Okay, any other board member announcement? Yes, Mr. Shaughnessy?
I know, this has been on the district website, but I'd just like to bring it up at a board, at the board meeting to congratulate, I think we've had four teachers recently who have been named master teachers, New York State Master Teachers, two at the high school, Mrs. Garner and Mrs. Montalbano. And there were two at, at Miller and I don't remember their names.
Wisneski and Andalina, yeah, yes.
So I would, I'd like to congratulate all of them for the, for the work that they've done and congratulate them on the recognition they've received. And I know at the high school, both Mrs. Garner and Mrs. Montalbano are, are using the flipped classroom. So they're making videos that are available to their students. And then, so that's a lot of extra work that they're, that they're doing. So I congratulate them on their efforts.
Okay. Any other board member announcements? All right, we'll move along to our second public participation. If there's anyone who wishes to address the board at this point, please come forward. No one? Okay, since we have no need for a second executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Needing adjourn. Careful going home, it's how you see out there.
I don't think these, they do eat the mites first at all.
After. Oh, yeah, go red.